All right, at this point in time, I'll call the Regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Can we have an invocation, please?
May I all stand, please? Father, we thank you for this gathering, and I ask you to give us wisdom and knowledge in our decision-making, and bless Prescott Valley and the area for the work that we do, and we thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Commissioner Yater, would you do the pledge?
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rutherford.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Dusky.
Here.
Commissioner Yater.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin.
Here.
And Chairperson Zercher.
Here. All right, so, well, I won't get there, I just wanted to do my opening statement real quick. So my name's Matt Zercher, for those of you who didn't hear before. I'm Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and will presiding over the Commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. We sit in an advisory capacity to counsel and review planning and zoning issues and forward recommendations regarding these issues to counsel. For this evening's proceedings, will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into the record. Following the identification of the hearing application, staff will present the case and the recommendations to counsel, after which questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will be directed to staff regarding the case. After the Commission has initially reviewed the application, the floor will be open for comment, at which time the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. At this point in time, I'll open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the planning case before the Commission. I ask that you direct your pertinent comments to the Commission through the Chairperson and not the applicant, staff, or individuals within the audience. I also appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief and to the point, and I may exercise a prerogative to confine public comment if need be to five-minute intervals per person. For the public hearing section of our agenda, I want to specify and make sure this is clear, this is only for the specific item that is on the agenda and not for what we discussed at the work study. So with that, I'd entertain a motion for the approval of minutes from the October 8, 2018, meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from October 8, 2018.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any announcements? All right. I do want to make an announcement real quick about, we're missing one Commissioner up here, and I just wanted to state that Commissioner Sherri Reeves has tendered her resignation from the Commission. I do want to publicly thank Sherri for all her years of hard work on this Commission, and I wish her the best of luck. At this point in time, we'll go to the public hearing items, and I'm going to read them into the record here, General Plan Amendment 18-003 and zoning map change 18-008. A request by Jake Investments LLC for minor general plan amendment from medium-high-density residential to regional commercial, along with a zoning map change from R2-4 residential multi-dwelling units to P1 parking on vacant lot 6742 in Unit 16 in order to develop additional parking in conjunction with the adjacent commercial use. Property is located at 5941 North Perry Lane. Presenting this evening is Mr. Joe Scott. Joe?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I'll also be discussing the action item, which can be acted on separately, which is the revisionary plat 1807 in order to combine Prescott Valley, Unit 16, Lot 6742 with previously combined Lot 6741A located, being the same property. As illustrated here, the subject Lot 7642, Unit 16, is vacant, is in the FEMA floodplain. Property to the north is also vacant in the floodplain. All the adjacent property currently zoned P1 parking was approved by ordinance 428 and 507 in 1997, 2001, respectively. Existing P1 parking area is also in the floodplain. It's used for parking of vehicles in conjunction with the existing Yavapai mechanical business and buildings on the adjacent property to the south, zoned C3 commercial, which was rezoned ordinance 227, 1990. All the lots comprising the current P1 parking and C3 were combined by a revisionary plat approved in 2002. This shows all the previously combined parcels. And the intent now is to rezone the subject Lot 6742 to P1 parking and combine it with the larger Lot 6741 with the new revisionary plat. Most all of the northerly portion of Unit 16, zoned R2, is undeveloped because of impacts from FEMA floodplain. Town policies do not allow development and connection to the town sewer system within the floodplain, but to allow parking on floodplain property when used in conjunction with an adjacent primary use. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting, October 11, 2018, and it was reported that one person attended the meeting, had no objection to the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission Town Council have supported commercial rezoning of the few R2 lots in Unit 16 that are not in the floodplain to P1 parking district when impacted by the floodplain, but used in conjunction with parking and storage and adjacent primary use. So with that, there's three recommended motions for these items. Well, if there's any questions, applicant couldn't make it tonight, but I can answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
I have none.
At this point in time, what I'll do is open the floor to public comment for the public hearing portion for General Plan Amendment 18-003 and zoning map change 18-008. Do we have anyone wishing to address the Commission with regard to this item? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the Commission. Do we have, let me also, because we're going to be discussing, and this will be the third motion, let me go ahead and read Item 8 into the record. Revisionary plat 18-007, upon the application of Jake Investments LLC, a request for revisionary plat in order to combine Prescott Valley, Unit 16, Lot 6742 with previously combined Lot 6741A located at 5860 North Bolton Drive. Anything else that you need to add, Joe? Okay. So at this point in time, I'd like to bring it back to the Commission. Is there a motion to approve General Plan Amendment 18-003?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve GPA 18-003.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky.
Yes.
Commissioner Yater.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve zoning map change 18-008 with the conditions that have been listed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky.
Yes.
Commissioner Yater.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin.
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher.
Yes. And then, is there a motion to approve revisionary plat 18-007?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky.
Yes.
Commissioner Yater.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher.
Yes. At this point in time, we will move to the call to public section of our agenda. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date. I do want to address that if you want to address the Commission with regard to the work study, you may. However, we may, due to open meeting laws, we cannot respond to you. If you have questions, we cannot respond. We can just only direct staff to ask, answer any questions you may have. So I just want to make sure, get that out there. So with that, do I have anybody that wants to address the Commission? And please state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Rob Eston, a Pronghorn Ranch resident. I chair the Home and Mans Association Committee that was formed to present concerns about the proposed Viewpoint 89 LLC development. As you know, petitions have been sent in, signed by more than 900 residents, and another 240 from Viewpoint. More people are asking where they can join the petition drive. We have numerous concerns. I know you cannot address them per se, fully aware of that, at this meeting. Recognizing my limited time to speak, I'll focus on one or two, depending on how much time I have. The first.
You have five minutes, sir.
Relates to whether or not including the multifamily housing in those two C and D portions in the work study constitute a major or minor amendment to the 2025 general plan. I'm fully aware that Planning and Zoning Commission moving forward.
Can you speak a little bit more into the mic, please?
Sorry. I'm fully aware that the Planning and Zoning Commission is moving forward on the basis that this is a minor general plan amendment. Clearly, from the number of people here today, many people think of it, just in its terminology, as a major general plan amendment, but the meanings of minor and major are subject to technical issues. I did send a letter to the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 30, asking for time to consider this and present arguments to the PNC Commission about it. I didn't have any formal response, and the only thing I heard at the time was verbal, and it was that it was inappropriate. I hope that that maybe was because the issue wasn't actually in front of the PNC Commission at the time. Some of the arguments are dealt with by the staff report, and you are provided in the staff report with some of the information about how to decide on whether it's a major or minor general plan amendment. But we, the citizens, would like to reiterate our request for an opportunity to provide an alternate view, and we would like, if possible, to get a formal response if you want to turn it down, including reasons why the Commission would refuse to even listen to citizen arguments. Because we, the people of Prescott Valley, have just elected a new mayor who ran on a platform of listening to us, so we would very much hope that the Commission will at least give us some time to listen to our case. Fine, make a decision after that, but we would like the opportunity. There are open questions about the technicalities of whether the 100 acres in the 100 acres with 250 or more allowable residential units refers to the entirety or just to the 42 acres, and we are prepared to argue those technicalities before you unless you refuse to listen to us. Now, Councilman Richard Anderson stated at the October 28 meeting regarding this matter, and I quote, "Everyone's allowed to have their say, and they're getting it." Well, we ask that that be honored. Major amendments require a more thorough vetting process by town officials, and this is as it should be, quote, "so as not to adversely impact the community as a whole or a portion of the community." And given the sizable opposition, I merely ask, is it not responsible for the town to give us an opportunity to argue that this proposal received the consideration called for as a major amendment? And isn't it the right thing to do for local residents who believe, whatever you may think, they believe that their quality of life would be dramatically affected? I do have another issue, Mr. Chairman, but I might not have time.
You have two minutes, sir.
I'm sorry?
You have a few more minutes. Go for it.
My second item concerns misleading illustrations shown to the public at the neighborhood open house. At that open house, erroneous posters were displayed regarding land use density. They showed a land use density of medium density, which, as you know, is eight dwelling units per acre, and the truth is that the land use change requested is medium-high, which would allow 15 dwelling units per acre. It's a substantial error. While there's no doubt that many of the public would not immediately latch on to the difference, the word "high" in medium-high is an important word, and it conveys important information. Its omission was material. We were dismayed further to see that the Community Development Department repeated it until we pointed out the error. It's an error in magnitude of 87.5% of density. So we call on the Community Development Department to explain how it is possible to allow the open house to qualify as a neighborhood meeting under Town Ordinance 1330012 when so materially misleading an illustration regarding the intended development was presented.
Thank you. We'll have staff respond to you. Thank you.
I'm Dennis Royalty. I moved to Pronghorn Ranch with my wife Ginger a little more than two years ago. She's in the green over there. Moved from Indiana. Pronghorn is where we built our dream retirement home. We love it here. The character of the neighborhood and the quality of life.
Can you do me a favor, get a little closer to the microphone?
Okay, sorry. Anyway, the character of the neighborhood and the quality of life are special, but now we learn of a proposed development allowing medium-to-high-density housing on both sides of Pronghorn Ranch Road. This is contrary to low-density housing that is both typical of Pronghorn Ranch and that was anticipated by the general plan. So we've signed a petition opposing the rezoning, as have many of our neighbors. We sign not only because of the proposed change will affect our quality of life, but also because our safety could be affected. Let me share what I mean about traffic and safety. As you know, Pronghorn Ranch residents are very limited now we can get in and out of the neighborhood. I appreciate Commissioner Roberts' concerns expressed in the work-study meeting. Pronghorn residents take Antelope Meadows either to Pronghorn Ranch Parkway or to Coyote Springs Road. That's it. Now, let's rewind back to May, when the Viewpoint fire was visible and smellable in Pronghorn Ranch. It was too close for comfort, although not so close that we needed to be evacuated. What I did see was a staging area for police and fire departments along Antelope Meadows, maybe 100 yards from our house. Now imagine that the wind is blowing the other direction and fire spreads to Pronghorn. What are our evacuation options? As I mentioned, there's only two. Now imagine we need to evacuate, but traffic is clogged on Pronghorn Ranch Parkway thanks to the new development or construction equipment working on the new development. Can more than 1,000 homes be emptied onto just Coyote Springs alone in an emergency? Are we inviting catastrophe? Is it worth the risk to add hundreds of more residents using the same route and fire trucks? Even if you approve this medium-to-high-density development against our wishes, can you ensure that our crammed roads will be improved before it happens? Wasn't clear to me from the work-study. Comments were made about when the commercial pays for it, we'll put the improvements in. I may be wrong, just wanted to throw that out there. So try exiting onto Viewpoint Drive at peak-traffic times or using Viewpoint Drive to get to 89A during morning or evening rush. It's clogged. Look forward to seeing the new traffic study. Now, remember that for so many of us, these are our lifelines. We don't have alternate routes. Does the traffic study really think a rezone is wise? Look forward to seeing it. A second concern that we have is water supply. That's something we all know is an issue in Arizona. As a member of the Citizens Academy class of 2017, I found it comforting when the Water Resources Manager, John Mundelow, told us there was no immediate concern about the Prescott Valley water supply. Mr. Mundelow also said, however, that the Arizona Department of Water Resources has strict regulations for approving new development in an effort to protect that supply. Clearly, placing 42 acres worth of medium-to-high-density development in Prescott Valley will consume millions of additional gallons of water per year regardless of where you put it. Our estimate is more than 32 million gallons from that part of the development alone. At a time when we're hearing stories of wells going dry in rural areas of Yavapai County, can you please ensure us that Mr. Mundelow's estimate of an ample water supply remain as he suggested to the Citizens Board last year? Thanks for your time.
Would you like a response from staff, sir?
I think as to the traffic, would love that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. And the water.
Good evening. I'm Linda Mast. I live in Pronghorn Ranch. I want to thank the Commission for the opportunity to share my thoughts. My husband and I moved to Pronghorn Ranch in May from the Chicago suburb of Woodridge. I served on the Plan Commission of Woodridge for nine years and was the Chairperson up until the time we were planning to move. So I have deep appreciation and understanding of the work of the Commission and your responsibilities to the community and the citizens you serve. I really appreciated the questions that you asked during your work-study tonight. My comments are specific to the Commission's responsibility to adhere to the general plan 2025, which was approved by Town Council in 2012 and ratified by the voters in a municipal election, March 2013. That plan is just five years old. By state laws, towns must have an updated plan that is renewed each 10 to 20 years. So our plan is still very current and relevant and received quite a bit of consideration at the time it was ratified. Chapter 3 of the plan states, quote, "While growth can contribute to economic health and overall diversity of a community, uncontrolled and unguided growth can lead to decreased efficiency in service provision, congested roadways, and loss of community character. The Prescott Valley community welcomes change but desires new growth that is controlled and enhances the unique attributes and character of this town," end quote. The Commission has an ethical and professional duty to use the general plan as your guiding principle for community development. This includes careful consideration of the voice of citizens you serve. This includes tiered growth and careful consideration of the character of the town. General plans are developed with great care. In fact, the general plan 2025 took over a year to develop and included considerable efforts to involve community input. Best practices available to Plan Commissions is to carefully adhere to the provisions of the town plan and consider those updates within 10 to 20 years. There can be exceptions. For example, if a community is landlocked or faces dire financial situations, neither of those applies to Prescott Valley. As an experienced Plan Commissioner, I understand the value of importance of the community development of the town's general plan. Just wanted to say some things, not necessarily that Mr. McGuire's plans are outlandish, but they don't fit the general plan. The provisions of the general plan are very specific to this area for single housing. There are many opportunities in Prescott Valley where the types of vision that he has would be appropriate. We have dead mall space. We have a lot of areas that really do need development, especially in the Tier 1 focus, which would be the urban settings. Lots of great opportunities for some of his ideas, but they are not right for this particular location because they're not consistent with the general plan. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration.
No clapping, please. Would you like a response from staff, ma'am?
Nope. I just wanted to make sure that I made my point to the Commission, someone that I can relate to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Brower, Chairman, Commission, Staff. We at Pronghorn Ranch are paying on a monthly fee for a CFD and what was related by Mr. McGuire tonight, that the infrastructures were already there. We paid for them. So the question is, and what has happened in the past, and developers usually paid for the infrastructures and then charged each house as they were developed, a fee to connect. But with this, CFD came around, that the town of Prescott approved, and which they said they will not issue any more bonding for this type of situation. I was concerned about that. Thank you.
Would you like a response from staff, sir?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
My name is Gifford Rodine. I live at 8025 North Sage Vista here in Prescott Valley. Good evening, Planning and Zoning Committee members. I will try to limit my comments to the five minutes allotted. It would be appreciated if you would save your questions until the end of the presentation.
Well, we can't ask, we cannot ask you any questions, sir. Please be aware of that. Thank you.
I did this survey on my own to find out what the citizens of Viewpoint wanted to have in terms of multifamily housing. So I'll read you my report. This turned out to be a quality-of-life education journey. Most citizens contacted felt their safety, security, and home value retention are their primary concerns. A survey of Viewpoint citizen homeowners containing a petition statement was circulated door-to-door by myself. Signatures of residents that are in favor of the petition were recorded. I have gobs of copies of them. Those numbers of citizens not in favor and did not want to sign the petition were also recorded. The petition reads as follows. "We are requesting that the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the Town Council, change the zoning of undeveloped areas of Pronghorn and Viewpoint, as well as all town land between those subdivisions and north of Highway 89A to single-family housing designations This was a statistical survey based on the quality statistical methods taught by both Dr. Geran, managerial statistics, and separately by Dr. Demming. They are both deceased, and they're both very famous people. They presented courses used by my previous employers, which I have taken. The website, https://surveysystem.com/sscalc-htm, was used for these calculations as it is based on their teachings. Four areas of Viewpoint, Viewpoint East, West, North, and the Reserve were surveyed. Each area surveyed yielded a statistically significant similar result. The petition was read to each respondent prior to signing. The aggregate results are, a total of 276 tax-paying citizens responded and were recorded. This represented 240 lots, parcels. 246 citizen resident homeowners, pardon me, 246 citizen resident homeowners were against any form of multifamily residences in the area described in the petition. 34 residents were opposed to the petition or had no opinion concerning multifamily residents. This results in a statistical 86% of the area's citizens responded being opposed or very opposed to multifamily residents in these neighborhoods. This is a very outstanding number if you're a statistician. For a 95% confidence level, the variance band, that's a plus or minus that you can put on that, is 6% on a citizen basis and 6.5% on a property lot basis. Therefore, a 95% accurate minimum for the folks that live in Viewpoint. Statistical approach yields 81% of the citizen residents are against zoning that is not single-family dwelling. I've got a little snide comment there. As it turned out, a large percentage of the person's petitions were retired. By my observation, probably 60 to 70%. This was not mentioned during the petition signing. An actual survey was conducted at the developer's open house, at the Bradshaw School cafeteria, and 84% of those surveyed indicated they were retired on a base sample size of 89. So the citizens of Viewpoint are very much interested in single-family housing being developed, anything north of Highway 89A to the north boundary and east and west, all through Viewpoint.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Would you like a response?
I got a response from Joe. I got a response from Joe. When I was asking him these questions, my wife was with me. The way I heard it was, he invited me to leave town.
Anybody else wishing to address the Commission?
My name is Steve Schwartz. I thank you for this opportunity to address you. As I can see, you, as well as us, are Prescott Valley. We are all concerned about the quality of life that we have here. We've moved. We've moved from, there's a lot of people, we've moved from all over the country here for equality of life. We just don't want to see it turn into another metropolitan area where we can't travel or we don't have open land. And some of the things that I see proposed here is going to, would cause a bottleneck, especially in the traffic area. Anyone that's driven there at any time can see that, to add 630 units, just on that 42 acres, 630 units with possibly two cars per unit times two travel zones per day, as you can see, that would cause a bottleneck in that area. Plus, reading the 2025 plan, some of it was, the high, a medium to high density should be located in an area where there's active employment, one, two, pedestrian walkways, none of which are in the area in which we live. So it's not really connected with that type of zoning. There was a couple of confusing things that the gentleman said. First, he showed us pictures of these two-story condominiums, and then the lady got up and talked about these cottages. Now, I don't know for sure, but once the zoning is changed, I assume that this gentleman could build whatever he wants to build within that range, which is the 15 units per acre. He's not limited to the cottages that he's proposing, as well as condominiums. I'm not sure whether he would have to make a commitment to you, the committee, as to what exactly he's going to develop. But that would be a concern because, of course, as you can see, there's a drastic difference between the two types of dwellings. We're not against, nobody here is against development. We just want it to be wise development that would fit in with the atmosphere of the Prescott Valley that we came to purchase and love and want to continue to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the Commission?
My name is Sharon Skoronek and I live in the Viewpoint and have lived there since 1999. My biggest concern with this development that's proposed is the traffic situation for all of us who live, I live towards the front of Viewpoint, but it stretches. We've got hundreds of homes back there. It is a bottleneck right now, and when you begin to put that density of apartments, et cetera, in, their traffic plan, it looked great for the new development, the Antelope Park, but it didn't and doesn't address the congestion and the bottlenecking that is occurring for all of us who live on that long stretch that goes back. One of the hazards with Viewpoint Drive has always been, with the homes that are on either side, Viewpoint Drive is our only way out to 89. And I certainly did experience the fear. When the fires came through, I was so concerned that that wind would shift. I have a disability, and I was trying to gather medications, and by the time I did all that, that fire was already way, way down, another mile down, and I realized later, I could not have found a way to get in a car, even if I'd left instantly, and tried to get out of there. So, I think the safety concerns are immense. Plus, we do not have a lot of young people living in there. We have a lot of more elderly people like myself. And it's not a simple matter of jumping in the car. You can't jump and you can't run. So, I do not know how they can alleviate the traffic situation that will become much more serious. We already wait sometimes five, 10 minutes to get out onto Viewpoint Drive, and I only live a block and a half from Viewpoint Drive. So if that exists now, adding all those homes and all those people, that density below us really is going to be quite a disability for those of us who live there. Thank you.
Sharon, could you state your last name again, please? I didn't get that.
Skoronek.
And Sharon...
Could you spell that? Thank you.
Sharon, would you like a response from staff?
I would.
Okay. And Stephen, I forgot to ask you, would you like, yes? Why, no, I'm going to, I'm going to cover that. And Stephen, would you like a response as well? Okay, so for those of, for anybody that is wanting to address the Commission and seeking a response, can you please make sure after the meeting that Vicki gets your address so we can respond to you?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pam Van Reel, a Pronghorn resident. And you've heard a lot about traffic, and that is one of my major, major concerns. As an example of this study that was done, all I have heard is that they're going to widen Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and make that two lanes. Well, that's fine until you get up to Antelope Meadows in front of the clubhouse. Then everyone practically turns left, so you're going to have four lanes filtering into two, and right now, it's already congested. You have to wait forever at some times of the day to be able to get that turn. So, I would ask that the Planning Commission, if you would be so kind, look carefully at this traffic study because it's a really critical, critical item for an emergency plan. It's just not adequate. It's not adequate now. So it certainly won't be that much farther down the road. Thank you.
Can you state your name again, please?
Pam. And then Van, V-A-N, space, capital D like David, R-I-E-L.
Thank you.
And would you like a response from staff, ma'am?
No, just, if you could just check into what I was talking about, that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bard Schatzman, I'm the other half of Linda. I don't have a prepared speech, but I was looking at the handout that we received regarding the 15 dwellings per acre. As Linda said in her presentation, we're from Chicago. I know what it's like to live in a congested area and traffic being congested, and I don't want to repeat what everyone said, but it will be a parking lot. There's no way that traffic can move from, from the clubhouse, you might say, Antelope Drive, to Viewpoint. There's no way, there's no entrance, no exit ramps. You need at least four lanes per direction. It'll never happen. And the other thing that's been mentioned is the fire hazard. We moved in the day of the fire. We were standing on our street with our other relatives, our other neighbors, with our keys in our hand, waiting to know whether we're going to be evacuated. Fortunately, the wind shifted and we moved to, it moved to Chino Valley. Otherwise, our home would have been probably burned the day we would move in. So I think it would be very negligent if you didn't protect the citizens that live in Pronghorn Valley. The other issues are looking at the projected changes due to rezoning. There's almost six times as many dwellings, three to four times more people, three to four times more vehicles, and there's a difference between the consumption of water now and what it would be. It's 34.2 million gallons more of water. How are you going to guarantee that? Thank you for allowing me to give my thoughts to you.
Thank you. And would you like a response, sir? Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the Commission? Please state your name.
I'm Karen Chrisler. Thank you for letting me speak. One thing that has not been mentioned in any of this is what about the schools where the children that are moving into these apartments or these single-family homes? What schools will they be going to? Have they taken that into account? The other thing is, I'm guessing that these, these numbers on the dwellings and the persons are kind of on the low side. They're, they're saying that they're going to come in 597 dwellings, 1,300 persons. I'm guessing it's going to be a little bit more than that, and as it was mentioned earlier, when they say that they're, we're looking at these two-story apartments that's proposed, but as he said, once this land is rezoned multifamily, we're going to get a lot more in there. And while they say we're going to self-contain it at 30 feet, oh, well, we're allowed 35, so we're going to go 35 and put another layer in there. And I don't see how this can be good for any of us. I don't want a grocery store in my backyard. I don't want my yard to look like Glassford Hill and the houses that are being on there. And driving down Glassford Hill is a nightmare as it is. I moved eight miles out thinking that it was a nice area and we had the view and that we would have that view and keep it that way. I don't want to live on Glassford Hill, number two. I want this to keep it as it is, and this is the home I thought we would retire in, you know? I don't want a grocery store and apartments blocking my view. I am one of the people they sent the letter to that my house is on Clear Sky Trail and backs right up to this. My concern is for safety as well, that you have these apartments and people literally in my backyard. Renters have a bad connotation, they do in my book. The people across the street from us rent the house. Over Christmas, their family member came and stayed with them and decided to burglarize my next-door neighbor's house. I don't want renters living in my backyard. So...
Thank you. Would you like a response from staff?
No, I just wanted to make it known that I'm against it.
Anybody else?
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Doug Hayden, H-E-Y-D-O-N. I noticed in the conversations this evening where traffic is concerned and a comment made about the desire to get a anchor tenant grocery store into that development. I only noticed one ingress to that commercial area from Viewpoint. That means that all the cars in that commercial area are going to have to exit back out on to Pronghorn Ranch Road in order to get out of there. Nothing was said about the traffic flow, especially if they're talking about bringing traffic from further east into that shopping center. How are they going to get out of that shopping center without bottlenecking the most critical point at Pronghorn Ranch and Viewpoint? Something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you like a response?
No need.
My name is Kathy Allen. I live in Pronghorn Ranch. Haven't lived there long, but I've lived there long enough to love that neighborhood. There were three things that struck me in the presentation tonight. First of all, Mr. McGuire presented bungalows for the first time tonight. I hadn't heard of that before, as a multifamily dwelling. One of the things that the first presenter said was that there is a 100-year certificate on single-family homes in that area, and I wondered how that applies when there are multifamily dwellings? How is that divided up once a multifamily area comes into that area? And they didn't say how many bungalows would be in that particular area, but if we're doubling or tripling the number of people that would be exiting, of course, the traffic is an issue. An issue that I have with the, with one of the things that was presented also would be a question to the Fire Marshal. The northeast section, in order for them to have two exits, both of them would be onto Pronghorn Ranch Road, and I wondered if that is an actual double exit, if you're exiting onto the same road? And it's the same one that most of us would also be going on to. So those are a few concerns that I have from listening to the presentation tonight.
Would you like a response?
I would appreciate it, yes.
All right, thank you.
Richard Gilmore, Pronghorn Ranch. Nobody's brought it up, but I will bring it up. You cannot tell me that if you put 600-square-foot homes in our area, that our property values will not go down. I'm from Gary, Indiana, lived there my entire childhood and early adult life, and I saw what happened to that city. Please don't let it happen to Prescott Valley and Pronghorn Ranch.
Thank you. Would you like a response, sir? Anybody else? Seeing one more here.
My name is Edward Jennings. I live in Pronghorn Ranch. We have lived there for five years. I'm concerned about Simmons Traffic Study. We are going to bring in supposedly a great many people into this community, and there will undoubtedly be families and children in school buses. And she has discussed the idea that there would be four lanes on Pronghorn Parkway. I'm assuming that's two lanes going in toward the clubhouse and two lanes coming out. And I don't think that's going to be adequate inasmuch as we want school buses to be turning into these neighborhoods. And she believes that it's possible to do this with deceleration lanes. I don't know what that means, but I think if you're going to use the brakes and the median to have people turning lefts and rights and into these areas from the Parkway, you're going to need some designated left-turn lanes, not just two lanes where people slow down and we wait for someone to make a left, but we actually have a left-turn lane where buses can go and make their proper turn, and the same thing coming out onto Pronghorn Parkway there. My second issue, and I would like an answer on that, please. My second issue is that we live in Pronghorn Ranch because we do not want to live in the type of communities we see in Phoenix, where every block has single-family housing and multi-story apartments throughout the community. Pronghorn Ranch and the area north of Highway 89 is primarily a semi-rural environment, and we like it that way. And no matter what you can do, Mr. McGuire, to amend your products such that you can make it more desirable to the people who live there, we do not want multifamily dwellings. We would prefer...
No clapping, please.
We would prefer just what we have, single-family homes, and preferably four to an acre. And what you are proposing is sometimes six, sometimes eight, perhaps as much as 15 units per acre, and that's what we're opposed to. And it doesn't matter to us how pretty you make it. It's the fact that we live in a semi-rural area, and that's what we would like to continue. And so we agree that the Plan 2025 should stay in place. Thank you.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice. All right, call to public is closed. All right. At this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.